I would like to call the March 17th, 2021 Regular Meeting of the Fenton Community High School District 100 Regular Board Meeting to order. Before we start the meeting, I would like to say it is great to see everyone in person and that we can have our first in-person board meeting since the start of the pandemic. This board, staff, and administration is continually committed to the safety of all students and staff as we continue, I'm sorry, of all students and staff in the continuation of learning here at Fenton High School. Mary, may I have a roll call?
Yes. Jowik?
Here.
Peyton Howell?
Here.
Figaroa?
Here.
Rego?
Here.
Ramirez?
Here.
Ting Pao-Pong?
Here.
Wedeman?
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. If you could all please join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. James, please read our Fenton Mission, Beliefs, and Bison Way Statement.
Sure. Fenton Mission Statement: Cultivate successful, passionate learners through rigor, relevance, and relationship. Successful, passionate learners thrive when we champion innovation, teaching, and engaged learning. School-home collaborate effectively. We provide a safe, secure, and caring environment. We infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture. Diversity empowers our learning community. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibilities. Our Bison Way: Students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, and empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Thank you, James. We move on to recognitions. James, if you could take that?
Sure. So, good to see some of the members of our speech team here and Ms. Feinberg here as well. We're going to give it to Mr. Kambeck to facilitate this recognition.
Good evening. Mrs. Hendricks could not make it today, but I wanted to sing her praises. She's been the best. One of the highlights of my time here is working with the speech team. This is glorious tonight. We have some outstanding students who represented Fenton with extreme honor. They went downstate and performed very well, and I'm just, I can't sing their praises enough. Ms. Feinberg and Ms. Hendricks are an awesome duo. And the way the speech works is there are individual events that you can win, and then everyone's performance is tallied up, make your team score. So for us, we got a champion in one of the events, and then the same person won in another event, so a double champion. And I'm going to pass that off to Ms. Feinberg to explain the rest.
Thank you. I hope everyone can hear this through this. I echo what Mr. Kambeck said. Ms. Hendricks is the best, and I wish she could be here tonight, but I'm happy to stand in her place. Before I introduce the students, I do want to say a few words. Usually, speech team, we're very focused on the words, but I would like to talk to you guys about some numbers that I think are really important. First, it's important to understand what these students had to, the journey they had to take in order to qualify for state. First, they had to place in the top four of our regional, and then they had to place in the top three of our sectional, which is the most difficult sectional in the state statistically. Twenty-eight of the forty-two entries from our sectional advanced to the state final round, so the final round of competition at the state final competition. So twenty-eight of the forty-two entries. To put the quality of our sectional competition into perspective, three out of the six sectionals across our state saw fewer than ten students qualify into those same final rounds. So basically, our sectional qualified three, at least three times. What, no, three times what three other sectionals combined it. It's really, it's so competitive, and I can't stress that enough. So even getting to state is such an arduous, such an arduous journey. Out of the one hundred and sixty-seven schools around the state participating in speech and the sixty-seven schools that were represented at the state finals, Fenton placed seventh as a team, tying with two other schools, Downers Grove South and Southland College Prep. DGS has a coaching staff of ten, and Southland College Prep has a coaching staff of nine. The average number of coaches on the coaching staff at the schools placing first through fifth is nine. Fenton has a coaching staff of two. It's also important to note that Ms. Hendricks and I are so proud of the diverse group of student voices represented on our team and by our state qualifiers, as seventy-five percent of our state qualifiers over the last five years have been people of color. Our students tackle material exploring issues and struggles faced by many underserved and underrepresented communities, and Ms. Hendricks and I sincerely believe the world is better for having their messages and voices amplified throughout our community. Something we always try to impart to our students is that they are part of a legacy. Competitive speech in Illinois has been around since 1941. In those eighty years, Fenton's speech has produced fourteen state champions, with five of those state champions occurring in the last three years. Clearly, our program has achieved great success in recent years, and our students have been able to benefit from the lessons imparted by the teams that came before them. For this reason, I want to take a moment to honor our 2020 state qualifiers, students who were unable to be recognized last year because shortly after the speech season wrapped, the pandemic began. Carissa Lara, a sophomore last year, was a state qualifier in poetry reading. Junior Ian Ting Pao-Pong and Senior Jesus Amador placed sixth in humorous duet acting. Jesus Amador also placed fourth in original comedy, and Senior Malian Ting Pao-Pong took first place in original oratory, something that hasn't been accomplished in that event by a Fenton student since 1979. We are so proud of these students and their accomplishments, just as we're so proud of this year's state qualifiers. This year's group of students were faced with the challenge of virtual competition. While it was definitely different than in-person competition, and not always easy, these students, as well as the rest of Fenton's speech team, rose to meet the challenge and never backed down, even when it felt overwhelming or frustrating. Their success has been hard fought, and it's that fight Ms. Hendricks and I admire and revere so much. So with that said, I'd like to introduce our state qualifiers. First, we have Evelyn Perez, state qualifier in special occasion speaking. Next, we have Alexandra Pizarro, a state qualifier in original oratory. Next, we have Carolina Rosas, a state qualifier in dramatic interpretation, and she also placed sixth in the state for humorous interpretation. And then finally, we have our state champion, our double state champion, Carissa Lara. Carissa placed first in informative speaking and first in poetry reading. She is Fenton's first double state champion since 1994. Thank you all for letting me address you and giving the time. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Get everybody in the back room, but they're going to stay right here. Yes. Great job. We're very proud of you. Thank you so much, and congratulations. Very good. All right, we move on to public comments. Mary, I'll go by this list.
Yes, we have speakers this evening.
Yes. Okay, then we'll have the first, okay. As a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes per speaker with a limit of thirty minutes. So we're going to have our first speaker, Joan Hitt.
Good evening. My name is Joan Hitt. I'm a music student at Fenton. I can only assume now that you have grown tired of hearing from me. It has come to my attention that Fenton is not offering AP Music Theory, Music Production, or Trouble Choir next year. I had met with members from administration a few weeks ago, and they had mentioned that there weren't enough students taking these classes, but then they had also said that there's no specific number of students set for classes to run. But then they had said that they're, oh, my bad. After following up with questions, they had said that the reason classes cannot run is because it does not fit the budget. Then in efforts to make this decision seem justified, they had said that when classes are taken off for the next year, a lot of thought goes into taking classes away. They had said that they look at years of data. If that were the case, then I would not be bringing this up. Last year, there were thirty-eight students in Trouble Choir. This past year, there is thirty-four. Now scheduled for next year, we are not running with ten students, but Trouble Choir is not the only class that has been hit with a low number. In the past year, Corral was at fifty students. Next year is at thirty-one. That is a nineteen-student difference. Concert Choir is currently at sixty-one. Next year, it's at thirty-six. That is a twenty-five-student difference. Trouble's choir difference is twenty-four students, much like the rest of the other choir classes. Music classes across the country have taken a hit during, due to the pandemic. Kids sign up for these classes to have fun, to perform on stage, and to sing with their friends, but now kids are dropping this because they did not sign up to sing at home. If math or English classes were in elective, they would be hit with the same issue. I have sent emails to the majority of you, if not all. One of you reached out to me and assured me that elective classes will be brought back in future years. AP Music Theory has been denied for students to take for three years now. I am fighting for all of these classes because it has shown me that if a class goes away, it is less likely to come back. Not everyone here is speaking, but if you support the music program, please raise your So I'm asking you, on behalf of my present self, my future self, my peers, my teachers, and the alumni, please make a change for the better for us. We've lost so much during this time. Do not take three more things away from us. If not now, then when? And if not you, then who? Thank you.
Next, Melissa To.
Can everyone hear me? Okay, great. My name is Melissa To, and I am a school counselor here at Fenton and the chairperson of the Fenton Education Association's Equity Committee. The members of the committee would like to communicate the following to the board. We look forward to working with the board's SDEI committee and thank Mr. Ting Pao-Pong for bringing it forward. In response to Mr. Wedeman's words after the public comments at the February board meeting, the community, and fans specifically, seems to be looking for action, engagement, and change on behalf of the board rather than continued professions that equity has always been a priority of the district. We support this and respectfully ask that the board engage with the community on this issue and strive to pronounce group names correctly as well, such as LGBTQ. In response to Mr. Batson's Technology Equity Initiatives presentation at the February board meeting, we believe equity in technology is more than partnering with outside initiatives or programs using government grant money already earmarked for technology usage or passing along laptops donated by outside groups. We respectfully ask the board to seek direct input from teachers, students, and families about their technology needs. In response to Mr. Martin's Financial Equity Initiatives presentation at the January board meeting, we believe financial equity is more than just supporting charity organizations, partnering with outside programs, or using money already earmarked from the government for initiatives like Chromebooks. This committee has shared with the Fenton administration an extensive presentation related to socioeconomic equity issues at Fenton that FEA members have observed. We respectfully ask that the board review this presentation as our administration and exec board collaborate on these topics. In response to the board's lack of engagement on current events as they relate to equity, we are disappointed to hear the silence of the board in condemning the racial undertones of the Capitol riot and their silence in supporting Black Lives Matter in our community. In response to the board's lack of acknowledgement of Black History Month, we are disappointed to hear the silence of the board in honoring Black History Month. We request that the board view the staff video titled "Quotes from Black Americans That Changed the Lives of Fenton Staff Members" and promote Black History in Fenton's curriculum year-long. We are very concerned about an apparent lack of equity in the demographics of students returning to hybrid instruction in direct opposition to the CDC's school reopening guidance-held equity considerations. After studying the demographic statistics shared by the school with the FEA, we have come to the conclusion that students of color, students who qualify for pre-reduced language, and female students are underrepresented in hybrid learning. However, IEP and LEP students are not underrepresented. So we understand that in addition to an email survey, IEP and LEP families were reached out to individually. Is this why they are not underrepresented? We have the following questions that we respectfully ask the board to look into. As the school resurveys families this week, what is the plan to address these inequities? What is the plan to reach out to families whose students are struggling academically or socially and emotionally to prioritize their return to hybrid learning? What percentage of families did not reply to the initial online survey last semester and were therefore defaulted to remote? What is the demographic makeup of these families? Are emails and all call or text notifications requesting responses to the survey equitable for all of our families? What else can be done to reach families who do not reply to the online survey? May I finish about twenty more seconds?
Sure, go ahead.
Thank you. Finally, we are very disappointed in the lack of diversity in the principal candidates and the decision to only open the position to internal candidates. If the board is truly invested in equity and inclusion, it should seek to follow Dr. Dubiel's recommendation in the district equity audit report to increase diversity among teachers and administrators with a focus on people of color. Thank you.
John Redzinski.
I want to start off by saying good evening to the board members and the staff and all the parents and students in attendance. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. I want to acknowledge the hard work of the board members. I understand what it's like to be a volunteer and to be an elected official, and I know it's not easy. Unfortunately, you're where the buck stops. It seems like yesterday, two years ago, I was standing before the board, or the board at that time, basically about to say the same things again. Perception is reality. The perception to the public, to the parents, and to a lot of people is that things are moving very fast and that people aren't being listened to. I've watched the board meetings for the last four months and saw very minimal action, very light agendas, and extended executive sessions. I'm happy to see no executive session tonight. I know it's necessary, and I know how it operates from my previous life. I also have to say the same thing I said two years ago. Why is there a rush for movement thirty days away from an election where four members of this board are going to change? I congratulate the principal on his movement. I wish him well, but again, after that go an earlier statement, what is the rush? The public heard about this change just over a month ago. No outside candidates were reviewed. This is a major decision. This is major for the school, the students, the board, for everyone. What is the rush? We have the year to finish out in the summer. If the person that is being selected is the most qualified candidate, and he very well may be, then he can stand on his merits. What's to say the next people aren't going to say the same thing? There could be up to four new board members. They are being saddled with decisions tonight with multiple contracts that they're going to be stuck with. I said this two years ago. It made no difference. That is what's prompted me to take action personally and put my money where my mouth is and try and run. I don't know if I'll do any better. I may do worse, but I'm going to give it a try. But I'm telling you, people in the public are not happy with the lack of transparency and communication back to the parents, the taxpayers, and the students. I'll cut it short at that. I'm not going to beat a dead horse, but I couldn't sit quietly and not say anything. You all have a good evening. Good luck with everything. Thank you.
Next is Stephanie Sobuziak.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you for having me. I am here for Joni. I am alumni of Fenton, graduated in 2000. I was part of band, part of choir, swing choir, musicals, plays, cheerleading, and a whole plethora of other things. The biggest thing that I can tell you tonight is that if it weren't for Trouble Choir alone, I would not have been able to be a part of the choir program, my freshman or sophomore year, because I was involved in band as well. I understand the need for cuts. I understand the need for students to join, but as Joni did point out, there is no limit on how many are supposed to be in it at this time, and also, we've been in a pandemic for a year. These kids, they take choir, like she said, to be a part of a group, to be with their friends, to enjoy what high school has to offer for them. If we sit here and we take these away from them, what are they going to have? Are we going to take away football? Are we going to take away basketball? Are we going to take away track? What's next? Every kid excels in a different way. Every kid goes to college for different reasons. Some want to be music teachers. If you take away this AP Music Therapy, if you take away Trouble Choir, you're taking away these kids' opportunity to grow in what they love. High school is when you have that opportunity. So again, I say, please reconsider this. These programs are needed. Again, I go back to, if it weren't for Trouble Choir, I would have had to choose band or choir. I wouldn't have been able to do both. So please, give these kids these opportunities. Don't cut these programs, because as Joni also said, once you take it away, it's super hard to get it back in these rooms. We've seen it over the years, as many programs have left and they don't come back. So give these kids these opportunities next year when they're in a real school year again, praise the Lord, and let them have it. Not to mention, I do still live in Wood Dale. My children will attend Fenton, and I don't want them to lose this opportunity to have these music programs that were so great, as I studied under Mr. Lewis and Mrs. Casey, and I love them and miss them dearly. And please, just reconsider this. Give these kids this opportunity. There's so many here right now. There's other in swing choir practice right now, despite the pandemic, with their masks off, working their butts off for this program, for the school, for what they love. Thank you very much.
Next is Kelly Mullins.
Good evening, President Wedeman and members of the board. I am Kelly Mullins. I'm a social studies teacher here at Fenton High School. I'm also a member of the district equity leadership team, and I'm also on the Equal Opportunity Schools Committee. First, I'd like to thank the district and the board for the meaningful banner in our front entrance. The banner, which reads "Hate Has No Place Here and Only Unity and Inclusion," is wonderful. I'm proud to teach in a school that prioritizes inclusion. This seemingly small gesture had an immediate impact on me as a gay teacher, and I know that as more students see it, they will feel welcome. I like the message that this sends to people visiting Fenton about Fenton's values and about how we celebrate diversity here at Fenton. However, I believe the recent principal search process does not follow these values of diversity and inclusion. Several years ago, I was involved in the interviewing of a new social studies teacher. I volunteered to sit in on summer interviews and ask candidates questions along with the department chair at the time. She shared that there were over two hundred applicants for the position. I recall interviewing four people that day, both internal and external candidates. The interviews took the entire day. Although we did not do it with this hire, it is also not unusual for interviewing candidates to be observed teaching lessons in their own classrooms or to be invited in Fenton to teach lessons and be observed teaching our students. The process was thorough, and the benefits are that we have an incredible team of social studies teachers here. About three years ago, I was involved in the interviewing of a new division leader. I volunteered to sit in on summer interviewing and to ask candidates questions along with other members of the division, several other division leaders, and our principal. I recall interviewing five people that day, both internal and external candidates. The process was thorough, and the benefits are that we hired an excellent division leader. Most recently, I was asked to be involved in the interviewing of a new principal. I did not volunteer because I believed that that process would be above-board and thorough. I have since learned that we interviewed fewer candidates for our principal position than we did for the social studies teaching position. We also interviewed fewer candidates for our principal position than we did for the division leader position, and we also did not seek any external candidates. This, despite our district's vocal commitment to equity and the recommendation of Dr. Dubiel in her Equity Audit Report to increase diversity among teachers and administrators with a focus on people of color. It's an injustice to our students and community to deny them a thorough and wide-reaching recruitment and interview process focused on equity. In this case, how can we say we did that? Thank you for your time.
All right, next is Hannah Caesar.
Hello. My name is Hannah Caesar. I am a music education major at Elmhurst University, and I am part of Fenton's graduating class of 2020. I would like to address the music classes that are going to no longer be offered to students next year. I've taken every single music class that Fenton has to offer, and I knew from the very beginning that I want to pursue music for the rest of my life. So Trouble Choir was a class where I knew I was able to go and truly be who I am with no judgment. The experiences I gained in Trouble Choir were different than the experiences I gained from any other choir. Throughout high school, I noticed Trouble Choir to be a safe space where students who were new to choir will be welcomed with open arms without having the pressure of being in a super-large ensemble like Corral or Concert Choir. Trouble Choir is a choir where students with troubled voices could really advance their skills before they moved on to Concert Choir. When I signed up for Music Production, I thought I was just signing up for a fun class to take my senior year where I could apply what I already know musically to a new genre of music. Music Production introduced me to the music software that I had to use in college due to COVID making my classes online. While I was in Music Production, I noticed the majority of the students in my class were not in band or choir or any other music class, and it was their first music class that they have taken at Fenton, which introduced them to the music community. While I took AP Music Theory my junior year, AP Music Theory helped me make my music understanding, like, raise up a level, and that year, I made ILMEA District Choir and ILMEA All-State Orchestra for Bassoon. While in AP Music Theory, I would help tutor my classmates who needed extra help, and now that I'm in college, this class has helped me place into our Advanced Theory class, where I also tutor other students in my advanced class and students who did not place into the Advanced Theory class. AP Music Theory has made my college-level music theory AP Music Theory has made my college-level music theory class feel super easy. And while I have not addressed some of the, we have not addressed some of the topics that I learned in AP Music Theory yet in my college-level course. So I reached out to some of my professors, and they gave me some statistics on music classes for schools in the area. So in the Chicagoland area, music students have received around $9.5 million in scholarships, with 25% of those students receiving $50,000 or greater in scholarship rewards going to college. Of the three high schools that they surveyed, students continued to college in 62 different majors, ranging from biomedical engineering, education, nursing, and business. Students from these schools' music programs represent over 100 different universities and colleges, including seven different Big Ten schools. Many studies have been conducted to prove that music helps students do better in school in all subject areas. Removing these classes will limit-- can I read the conclusion? Like, it's just--
Sure, go ahead.
Altogether, these classes have shaped me into the person that I am today. I always knew I wanted to major in something involving music, and without these classes, I feel I would really be struggling in my college-level classes. These music classes have taught me important skills that I didn't have the privilege of learning in my other classes. I was able to hold leadership positions, tutor, and develop an understanding of how to work as a team, which all of these skills that I'm currently using in college and will eventually use as an adult in the workplace. Thank you.
Xavier Peet.
Good evening. My name is Xavier Peet. I am a proud graduate of the class of 2015. Today, you all vote on the contract of a new principal, someone that is to lead the students, teachers, and administrators in this building. I believe that this decision and process of finding a new principal was rushed and done with partiality. There was no external search for a perfect candidate to fill this position. There were only three candidates, and one was told not even to interview, which further makes me think that this decision may have been predetermined, which would infer partiality towards certain applicants. Not to mention that there was a new, not to mention that there is a new board that will be elected into service April 6. Why would this board vote and leave a school and community with someone they will not oversee? Why not leave this decision up to the new board? I urge this board to table this decision until the new board is in place and they can make an impartial decision. Lastly, I am also an alumni of the Finn Choir Program, an amazing program, I may add. And I am perturbed to know that two, now knowing three choral classes, are being canceled. And I find that astonishing because most of the people on this current board have students and children that went through choir and band here. The staff member that leads this program has poured their heart into this program, and they deserve more support from this administration, especially seeing as the reasons behind the cancellation of these classes aren't valid. There wasn't enough kids. But when asked how many kids needed, there isn't a minimum. The irony in all of this is that this administration canceled an all-girls chorus in the middle of Women's History Month. The school deserves better. The children deserve better. Thank you for your time.
Next up is Talia Anguiano.
Hello. My name is Talia Anguiano. I use she/her pronouns, and I am a 2013 Fenton alumna and also highly concerned with the cuts that have been made to our district's fine arts program. It is no secret to many in this room that I was an avid choir kid throughout my time here. I did choir. I was in musicals, swing choir. I literally, everything that had choir after its name, I was just there. And the music program and its leadership were absolutely pivotal in my development as a student. And choir was a place that I felt safe being vulnerable. I felt seen. I was challenged and holistically celebrated. And I know this rings true for many in our audience this evening. I think we can all agree that our students have been through a lot over the past year, and to take away something that is so treasured due to low enrollment is incredibly disheartening. Low enrollment throughout a pandemic and remote learning is to be expected, and I would hope that district administration would give their employees a bit more grace, guidance, and support throughout this difficult and unprecedented time. I call on you all as board members to think about what major cuts to a music program says to our students and parent supporters who believe in the magic that comes with music. While I was a student here, our school principal at the time was an avid supporter of the choral program. He was truly at every single concert, production, in-class final performance that you can think of as a principal should be. With that in mind, as you all navigate through this new principal appointment, I encourage you all to think about how equitable and transparent this process really was. Was the process ever extended outside of the district for more diverse candidates and perspectives? And as we realized this evening, it was not. And was there ever an extensive vetting process set in place? Our students absolutely deserve a principal appointment that will show up to concerts, sporting events, and remember their names. My principal remembered every single student's name that walked through these halls, and that is not an exaggeration. He also pronounced students' names correctly, might I add. My name is pronounced Talia Anguiano, by the way. I just wanted to throw that out there. Considering the speedy timeline, this process, and from my perspective, has not been given the gravity that I need to spend time to search for an expansive, diverse pool of talent. The start of the school year is a ways away, and there is absolutely time for an intentional and community-engaged search. I hope you all are truly listening to the concerns of our community members and especially our students this evening and the call for open communication and transparency in the administration's recent decisions, budget cuts, and processes. There is no need for a re-use statement from board leadership to, at the end of public comments this evening, to thank us for our time. I think at this point in time, what we're all feeling right now is folks here, listening, and from wherever they're at right now, deserve answers to questions that come directly from our district's leadership. Thank you.
Next up is Sylvia Hyde.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sylvia Hyde, and I'm here in support of the Fenton Music Department. I have had six children graduate from Fenton High School. I have my last one who's graduating in 2024. One of my children benefited greatly, not from the music department, but from extracurricular activities here at Fenton. He lived in a very dark place during his time at Fenton, suffered from deep depression. The basketball team was what he was a part of, the extracurricular activity. And it assisted him with dealing with those dark places. And I ask that you really consider keeping the music department intact fully. None of the classes canceled. My son survived depression while he was here. Now, I'm not saying that not having that activity in his life caused him, but he lost the battle with depression and took his own life, not three short years after he graduated from Fenton High School. So I ask you to please consider that when you consider taking away these extracurricular activities for the students. These are things that they're passionate about. These are things that assist them with dealing with depression. And they're going to come back here. A lot of the students did not have any problems with depression. They're going to come back here after all of this with some issues. And I ask that you please consider that, if nothing else. That's all that I have to say tonight. But I just want you to understand how the importance of the therapy, that music, it's a benefit to those children. So I ask you to please consider not cutting those classes. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to thank Joan Hitt, Melissa To, John Rizinski, Stephanie Sobuziak, Kelly Mullins, Hannah Caesar, Xavier Peet, Talia Anguiano, and Sylvia Hyde for your comments. We appreciate you taking the time for the benefit of Fenton High School. I'd like to once again reiterate and make clear that each and every board member here is unequivocally committed to and has always embraced inclusion, diversity, equity for LGBTQ+ students, students of color, undocumented students, low-income students, and students with disabilities. This board and district's commitment to students from traditionally marginalized groups is impressive in breadth and depth. I would also like to address the music department. The music department is not being shut down. Rest assured, the arts are and will always be supported at Fenton High School. This is a very important facet for Fenton High School. Again, I would like to thank everyone who spoke and who came and said their comments here. We truly appreciate it. Next, we move on to District 100 informational items. James?
Sure. Next up is the Fenton Equity Report. So far, we have reported how we have incorporated equity in our professional developments, such as anti-racist and anti-bias professional development, how we live equity with our student club's curriculum, our dean's department, Restorative Justice, equity through finance and perspective, and equity and technology with Dr. Batson last month with technology. This evening, we have a special guest, Dr. Dubiel. Dr. Dubiel is online. Jim confirmed that, with us this evening. We are happy with her work, with our staff, with Delt, with the board members regarding equity, diversity, and inclusion. This evening, she will provide the board an update regarding DEI, which stands for Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Training, and Delt, the district equity leadership team. After that, she can answer any of the board's questions that they might have. Take it away, Dr. Dubiel. We cannot hear you. Now we can.
I can hear you.
Yes, a little louder, please.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yep. Can we turn it up, Jim?
Hello. Check, check.
Perfect.
Okay. Echo. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Avette Dubiel, and my pronouns are she/her and eh. And I am excited to share with you, excuse me, an interval update regarding the systemic equity work that Fenton High School District 100 has engaged in. Please note, this is an interval update. It's not a usual update. Usually, it is actually suggested that we present at the end. But per request, I'm happy to provide an interval update. Before diving in, it's critically instrumental that we have an understanding that when it comes to systemic equity, there is no final destination. This is a process. And organizations, essentially, the goal is to have critical transformative shifts. It takes time, but it never ends. The work is complex, pervasive, and power-based. Authentic equity does not occur overnight. It would be a very harmful misnomer that it does. At the same time, in no way does that suggest we don't have urgent shifts to make. So what I'm about to share with you is where Fenton High School District 100 is currently in the process for transformative shifts. We can go to the next slide. Okay. So equity action planning. First, let me applaud District Fenton 100. Oftentimes, districts would be very interested in an equity audit. And then, as you can imagine, sometimes it ends there. And districts sometimes invest time and money, energy, and resources to conduct the audit. There's not always a consistent follow-through. Fenton 100 has not done that. They have ensured not only that they have read the audit. I know that they're in a process of still adopting many of the recommendations. But they're now very interested in the equity action planning. And the equity action planning is a very intense, comprehensive, laborious process. So I'm going to share that process with you. And they're deep in it right now. As a reminder to the work that has been accomplished during school year 2019-20, there was a district-wide equity audit. That report was presented to you. In the fall, Delt had-- and I apologize in case folks don't recall. Delt stands for District Equity Leadership Team. So that's a team composed of district staff personnel. And so they reviewed the findings. We had an opportunity to answer questions. And then board also reviewed those findings. And then in spring 2021, we reconvened Delt. Now, what the work is, is the action planning. When it comes to an equity action plan, I'm going to now refer it as an EAP. We love our acronyms in education. When it comes to the EAP, what's going to happen is the EAP that's being created for spring 2021 is what the district is working to roll out for 2122. And then they do it again, spring of 2022, and then spring of 2023. It does not go away. This is how we can ensure equity stays at the forefront. We are critical and we are authentic in its practices, in its pedagogy, in its resources, in its other actions. So we keep it at the forefront. We ensure that our equity action plan is measurable, that it is aligned with the work that we currently have in place, that we can ensure accountability, and they're very transparent in the process. That equity action plan is not one plan. We can turn to slide-- sorry-- but five plans. The research is clear. There's not one thing you can do to advance equity. So we have a framework. We have an accountability framework. The accountability framework is called the Five Strands of Systemic Equity. So we need measurable, actionable, systemic plans regarding systems. Some of those plans regarding systems will have to do with policies, procedures, HR practices, dress code, finances. The second strand is teaching and learning, curriculum, assessments, instructional programs, academic programs, culturally responsive practices, student voice climate culture. That strand would have such actions, anything to do with student voice, extracurricular activity, discipline and behavior, SCL, trauma-informed practices, and the climate and culture among faculty. Fourth strand is professional learning. There is no N to professional learning in the continuum of equity. It is truly a continuum. It becomes much more complex in the transformative social justice expectation that we have as a society to disrupt the socialization that we all receive. And then the fifth and final strand is family and community as agency. We cannot do this work alone. We must have partnerships with our parents, guardians, caretakers, community members to advance equity. In looking at the Five Strands of Systemic Equity, a couple of things to acknowledge and point out. Each strand is equally important. They are numbered for ease of reference. It's not because they are in order of importance. At minimum, in creating an equity action plan, the district must ensure one goal that is measurable, accountable, transparent. It's research-based in each of the strands. So in other words, you receive five EAPs, one EAP under each strand. Now, under each strand, you can have multiple objectives. A reminder that what the Delt is doing right now is creating an EAP for 2122. And oftentimes, what happens in the brainstorming and they get some suggestions of what that could look like, some research, some data considerations that are both quantitative and qualitative, it is really critical to have a mixed-method approach in identifying some of those goals of what we want to carry out in 2122. There's also oftentimes a very excited perception of wanting to do a lot. And I couldn't share that excitement more. But oftentimes, we know that there are barriers that are in the way to do everything. Lack of time. Money is often going to be associated with some of these transformative shifts, lack of personnel. What is important for the Delt to know, the board to know, the district-- What is important for the Delt to know, the board to know, the district to know, the community to know, this is not going away. So the goals that get established in the strands could be inherited from year to year. And what's important, even though 2122 may not be anywhere where we want, we should see progress in 2526, 3031, and it does not go away. And we can, we should be able to see the trend if we are true and authentic to the process of the EAP, making sure that we're progress monitoring and making sure that we're accountable and transparent to the work. So our team, we can go to the next slide. Where we are at currently, so far, the team has had their first draft of the EAP where they're identifying their goals, and now they're in that process of how do we measure it? What is the progress monitoring going to look like? We've only met, I believe, two or three times. Our next steps, again, for spring semester, they go through a couple of drafts. That's expected, that's part of the process. And one of those really important pieces, they're all important, but one of the critical pieces is Delt, as mentioned before, is comprised of staff members. And the reason that is critical, and that is important, and that is a very strong recommendation are for two reasons. One, Delt is going to have to have access to confidential student records. So there's laws behind that. And two, because of the requirement of how much time is required to get a lot of this work done, well, we can require staff to make sure they carry out the objectives as opposed to volunteers. That being said, there is opportunities, and there will be, that's part of the EAP, to have advisories at the community level and at the student level. This cannot be where staff owns the equity process. This very much is grounded on equity work. It would perpetuate inequities if we didn't have student voice, if we didn't have community voice. So part of the process in the two strands, student voice, climate culture, and family and community as agency, they are working to establish what would that look like, that equity advisory? And what could that, how can that look like? What could that process be? And then provide an opportunity for people to join and continue to do that, continue to have that mutual conversation, that bridge and that partnership in the work that we're doing regarding equity for the district. So that's where we are at currently. The goal is to complete the EAP at the end of the spring semester, and then the team will be presenting to the board what was finalized. What are the objectives for 2122? And then the goal is in 21, the spring of 2122, or 20, yes, 2022, they share what has been accomplished, what may be carrying over, because it's a long-term, and perhaps what are some new objectives. And the idea is to present twice a year to be transparent in that process and to be critical. You're not going to perfect it. It's much more dangerous to say we're going to perfect the equity. You cannot perfect equity because of the transformation with social justice. And so when people are challenged, when districts are challenged to do better, I welcome it. It has to be. That's part of the process is we have to do better. We have to be vulnerable. We have to be consistent in this work. So know that this is, the expectation is twice a year to present to the board on where they are at. One of the other things just to share before I turn it over to any questions is the district has also expressed interest in professional learning for all staff. So I do host several different professional development options from the public sector to educational entities. And so the district is partaking in a series called Equity Anti-Bias Anti-Racism, and it's all staff. So what we have conducted so far, yep, so these are some of the topics. And let's be clear, in no way, even though it's a six-hour series, in no way is that enough. I teach at the university, and there's still not enough, right? This, the work never ends. But what is important is that we're going to walk away, the idea is that we're going to walk away with some common language. We're going to walk away with the criticalness of this, that the continuum continues after me. It needs to, and I know it started before me, and that's fantastic. This work, this development is constantly evolving. We're talking about humans, humanity, brain, the brain function, the biases that we all have, cognitive dissonance, our behaviors, our relationship with each other. This work never ends. And frankly, because we are in the humanities field first before education, we are expected, authentic equity, transformative equity, is expected that we continue developing our capacity in this work. So for the few hours that I was able to have with the staff, some of the topics that we've covered is what you see on the slides. I'm not going to read them to you. You can certainly review them to themselves. But quite a bit of content, I think, in a short amount of time. And there's never enough time. Everybody wants to be in front of teachers, and it's a limited amount of time. But I appreciate the time I have been in front of them. And if we go on the next slide, so there's two sessions left. And those two sessions alone, and I noticed that there's two bubbles that I repeat. I apologize for that inclusive language. And the next two sessions left will encompass these topics. And again, I won't read these to you, but you can review those or you could ask questions if you'd like about that. Okay? And then the last slide is any questions?
Dr. Dubiel, is the, the class that we're taking, that the board is taking on Saturdays, is it the same that the staff administration is getting in the school?
Very similar. It's not identical.
It's been eye-opening.
Yes, thank you.
Dr. Dubiel, you talked about transformative equity and how humanity transform. What does that exactly mean in layman's terms?
Yeah, transformative equity, well, we can think of it transforming. A lot of research would say we have to deconstruct or abolish a lot of what we're doing in school. And because we're not going to hit, unfortunately, there is no reset button, or we can really start from zero, but we can be transformative. And that transformative means everything needs to be evaluated and analyzed with an equity lens. From everything, from our resources, our allocations to academia, our board policies, our strategic planning, our wraparound service, every staff member should have the foundational pieces regarding equity and then have an opportunity to self-select regarding the equity continuum when it comes to learning, because people are in very different places, some people are very novice, some folks are well-versed and veterans. In this work, this is transformative. This is changing the culture and climate of an entire organization where equity becomes second nature, where we're disaggregating data on a continual daily basis. We are very familiar with our data, and not just the hard numbers, but the qualitative. We're being purposeful because we know data is great, but also data tells a very limited story. There are situations of inequities occurring in our classrooms, in our school, in our hallway all the time. That is not documented anywhere. So we're ensuring that we are very purposeful in gathering that on a regular basis. That requires transformative shift. That requires transformation among people first, changing minds, changing hearts, understanding that this is in no way some type of political indoctrination, which is probably not a surprise oftentimes, a misnomer for this work, and it's not. This is about leveraging historically marginalized identities and the intersectionality of those identities and how they have never been centered. And so that transformation takes time because we have inherited an education system that has been designed in many ways to be inequitable. And it's not exclusive to education. Many public sector organizations like healthcare, housing, employment, criminal justice systems, and education have not been designed centering historically marginalized identities. And we've inherited these systems and structures, and as a result, we have to be transformative in that work.
Any other question by the board?
Yvette, you know, I'm a fan of yours. We love what you taught. You teach me something every day, every time I listen to you, and we appreciate that, and the district is moving in that direction. So the interval communication here, so we'll see you again in June? Is that our plan there? Is that the date, or is it July?
Oh, oh, for the board presentation? I thought it was May.
May, okay. We'll have Mary Timmons take a look at that. There's no more questions. Thank you, Dr. Dubiel. We appreciate everything you do.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next slide.
Okay. Just real quick, let's see, last Sunday, Fenton quarterback, Fenton quarterback, another vaccination event in the Village of Bensonville. We had, here at Fenton, obviously, we, Village of Bensonville, Park District, Library, District Two, St. Alexis, and IDPH, which is the Illinois Department of Public Health, were all working together to get about 1,500 individuals vaccinated. The target of these events were to vaccinate our hardest-to-reach community members in Bensonville. That's our brown folks. Those are folks who are stuck at home because we know there's a disparity in the folk in regards to who's getting the vaccine and who's not getting the vaccine. So there was a special effort by Illinois Department of Public Health reaching to schools like Fenton saying, hey, look, how can we get more of the hard-to-reach folks vaccinated? We delivered. 600 individuals from Bensonville were vaccinated with their first dose in the morning of last Sunday. They are scheduled to receive their second dose on Sunday, April 11. Fenton will continue to quarterback this event. We sound, made that distinction because later on in the afternoon, Illinois Department of Public Health, same Sunday, our quarterback and Fenton, the Fenton team were the running back and fullback at that date. Together, we vaccinated 900 more individuals that needed their second dose. These individuals were not residents of Bensonville, but were also part of that hard-to-reach population. In total, at the end of the day, 1,500 people were vaccinated. So that was a big event, really great feedback from our community here in Bensonville. And I want to thank again the Village of Bensonville, the Park District, the library, District Two, St. Alexis, and Illinois Department of Public Health. Mr. Cambick has created a video in regards to our vaccination efforts. Just wanted to say to the board, and you guys know this, so far, we have vaccinated eight, we have provided 8,200 vaccinations here at Fenton, probably the largest in any high school in Illinois. As you folks know, we were the first to vaccinate our staff, as well as our feeder school. We were also the first high school to incorporate our, our, our communities, both in Bensonville and Wooddale to get their shots out. So we're going in our tournament. Our next project is we would like to be the first, which doesn't mean, you know, it's a competition, but it's the competition that we need to have is to vaccinate our kids when that is available.
James, do you think that there'll be another, another round of vaccinations? Given our, our school will be a site for another round?
Absolutely. We have become basically the vaccination site. The one I'm really targeting, I reached out to Jule Osko and some of the other vaccine providers. We would love to vaccinate all 1,500 of our kids if they, if they choose to. That would be the next big one. Now, if IDPH or, or Jule Osko reached out, hey, look, we got 2,000, 3,000 vaccines for one seat, which is the next group to be vaccinated, of course, our, our, and I'll show that in a minute. There is a need for that in our villages. Good question, thank you. Let's show the video. Real quick, just another great set of data for Bensonville and Wooddale, and particularly Bensonville. You guys remember a couple, not one, two months, about six months ago, seven months ago, in November, December, we were ranked number two or three in DuPage as one of the highest cases. Bensonville, right? We're now 15, okay? Because we're taking those mitigations, the vaccination process, which is great. We're basically here. We used to be up there, right? Paid attention when I was presenting or putting the report, but that's pretty good. Okay, that's pretty good. We still got a way to go. The goal is to continue to decrease that number. We know our families are helpful with these efforts that we are doing. This is the, the metrics we continue to watch because it's important. We're still in substantial, okay? But as you can see here, there's a lot of minimal. We are going in a direction, there was an uptick a little bit, so continue to wear those masks and wash our hands. Last year, it was a 3.2%, it's back to 4.6%. We need that to continue going down, continue going down, and I think vaccination will help. Let's see. Next slide? Yep, there is, thank you. Now, in regards to policies, with Illinois Department of Public Health, ISBE, the Illinois School Board of Education, March 9, they released another public health guidance for schools, okay? Then, two days later, they revised it some more. So if you remember, this continues to be a moving target in regards to their guidance, and that's understandable because this is a pandemic. We do not, we cannot predict the virus. We do not, we cannot predict the virus and how it reacts when it involves people. But the five points here that I'm going to go over, it still stays the same, okay? It's the three W's stays the same. Wear a mask, watch your distance, or social distancing, wash your hands. Okay, in a nutshell, we're gonna, go ahead, Patty.
And do things to keep yourself healthy, and take your vitamins, and get exercise, and get rest, and, yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Vitamin D and vitamin C, and yes, there are things you can help to keep yourself healthy.
That's correct. So the three W's are still there, and contact tracing is important. So if someone has the COVID virus, we follow our same protocol. And we continue to disinfect and clean our classroom in a daily basis. So that requirement stays the same with the new guidance from the IDPH and ISBE. Here are some new ones. If you haven't figured it out already, haven't been watching the news, we want to open up, okay? With the vaccine, I think is a game changer. We want more kids, and the government's opening up, whether it's restaurants, schools, and so forth. We're going to focus on school. Here are some changes here. Number one, students at increased risk of severe illness or who live with people at increased risk may, they changed the word may, it used to be must, be given an option of remote instruction. We're going to continue that at Fenton. Number two, social distancing for in-person learning is now defined as three to six feet for students and fully vaccinated staff. Mind you, you see the word "fully vaccinated." We need to unpack what that really means for Fenton, okay? But that's, remember, it was strictly six feet apart, six feet apart, now they're saying three to six, okay? Three, good news here in regards to graduation, that's just two months away. Outdoor events such as graduation follow the Phase Four Outdoor Seated Spectator Events Guidelines, okay? What that means to me and Principal Yovan here, Elizadevich, means that we could basically have a graduation in our football field, six feet apart, with all of our seniors, class of 2021, and have limited, limited spectators, perhaps two to three tickets for the parents. We need to continue to look at those metrics. I believe by, when it hits May, there's going to be another revision. But that's what we're thinking now. Also, indoor events such as indoor prom should follow the Phase Four. Here's the big one, 50 people or 50% of the capacity. It used to be just 50 per space, like today, 50 here. Now they're saying 50%. We're also thinking about prom, we're looking at different places to have prom. We're actually, this Friday, we're going to White Pines Golf and take a look at that. It's airy. Go ahead, go ahead.
How about the Fieldhouse?
I've been actually meeting with our juniors and our senior classes for probably about a month now to start to organize some of those. So, yeah, we're definitely looking forward to some prom event, some senior event towards the end. We also have, we're planning a movie event for seniors. We're going to get Mr. Antango on the grill, because we know he likes flipping the burgers. And we're going to do that on the football field. We're trying to secure a date for that as well, but we're working with the company to get that. So, yeah, we are looking for ways to engage our seniors as we kind of go out. But prom is definitely one of those. There was a senior survey that went out for our students, asking about what they would like to see out of prom, a formal event, non-formal event, here at school. So, yeah, we've been in conversations and definitely listening to student voice on that.
Very good. Someone said the Fieldhouse, I don't think our seniors want to do prom. Whoever said that, they want to be somewhere a little bit fancier, and they got my vote as well. Lastly, capacity limits to in-person learning associated with activities, lunch PE are now determined by the space ability to accommodate social distancing versus a set capacity number percentage. So if we want to do lunch at school, it's six feet apart instead of 50, okay? That's a game changer, right? Before, we couldn't do lunch, we couldn't serve lunch, it was a grab and go. We need to still unpack that, okay? Okay. It's going to get interesting. School schedule updates. As you know, last week, okay, March 9th, we started our hybrid program. Approximately 50% of our kids, approximately 50 students attended per day, okay? Kinda low, okay? We knew it was going to be low, because we took that survey. We asked folks a couple of months ago, who would like to come back in hybrid, and who would like to stay remote? Approximately 70% said they want to go remote, okay? 50 students is much lower than 30% that we were expecting. This week, when all hybrid students that chose hybrids should come, only 100 students came per day. We want that number to go up. And I think some of these changes, this revision, will assist us, okay? Next week, or even as early as this Friday, we're going to send out a questionnaire, okay? Encouraging, part of questionnaire and formatives to encourage folks to come to school, right? But it's going to be the parents' choice, okay? We're going to ask, are you interested to move from remote to hybrid two days a week, okay? Two days in person per week. And for the people who are already here, two days in person per week, we're going to ask them, would they like to go four days a week, okay? So we're trying to rev it up. What are we planning for the summer 2021? We're planning a full in-person summer school like it was pre-pandemic time. Okay, planning, things could change, as you know. We don't know what's really going to happen in June, but that we are planning. We are under talks and planning with Sam, Yovan, and the rest of the admin team. What are we planning for fall 2021? We're planning for a full in-person return back in fall. Again, once again, we're planning. We don't know how it's going to look. We're assuming that the vaccine will continue to spread, and we will make that happen. There is a real push, as you know, whether state or federal, to open up school fully and encourage folks to come back to school. FOIA. We received a FOIA from the Pro Public Chicago Tribune Law Enforcement, okay? We gave them the data they needed. They were requesting information pertaining to the involvement of law enforcement at Fenton from 2018 to 2021. Specifically, how many arrests, referrals, and citation? Also asked for the gender and race and ethnicity of students involved. We're not the only school, they're asking all schools, pretty much in DuPage, in regards to what is the role of a police officer, how many arrests, and so forth. So this, we've seen this before. It's not particular, hey, look, you know, something's happening at Fenton or anything. I think they're trying to come up with a story, and they do these FOIAs. Any questions there? We want our kids back, you know that, we got to encourage our folks back. We're going to put out that survey. And it goes without saying, like, I got a call the other day, hey, look, I chose remote. I want my kids there tomorrow. Yes, come on, let's go, could you come tonight? No, so those things are important. So we are being nimble and flexible, we want our kids back. Unfortunately, what I'm also seeing, what Principal Elizadevich is seeing, as folks move from remote to hybrid, there's also the reverse, right? Folks from hybrid want to go back to remote. So we got to kind of figure that out, we got to encourage folks. But I think as it gets warmer, being a kid myself a couple of years ago, playing sports, extracurricular, when it gets hot outside, I think there's more social influence to get back to school.
Yeah.
Maybe 40 years ago. Thank you for that.
Hey, James.
Yes.
I can't help but think that, you know, how this pandemic, you know, kind of post-pandemic life that we're going through, kind of like how we went through 9/11 and flying, it was never the same. And I don't know how this is going to look in terms of state laws and guidelines and all that, but I would think that in terms of a district, we could, if there's a case for it, you know, once we, you know, we've got a lot on our plate, I understand. But one maybe item to put on the list would be a post-pandemic situation where there is a repeat of this, you know, maybe two years later, a year later, that we consider how we can be more prepared for it. And I think we've done great, you know, as far as just improvising and being in the right place at the right time with what we do, you know, the best we could. But learning from this, reflecting on what we've gone through, what could we do maybe better, if anything? Particularly in the remote learning area, you know, the remote learning 2.0, or whatever we did there. I'm just kind of thinking out loud here.
Sure. We do reflect on that, toys, we, that's a great point. We had a conversation with Michelle Papa-Nicolo. Now, what have we learned from this? How could we make school better? What happens if this happens again? Hopefully, it's another 100 years, but we are ready. What kind of schedule should we have? It's very interesting and reflective as well. Right now, we're focused on in-person summer school. I think that's a good start for our, hey, look, we're going in-person, okay? We have enough space during the summer, because there's, you know, most kids don't go to summer school, we want that to happen. And that should catapult us, hopefully, for an in-person fall start. That is our hope. I think that's the number, you saw it earlier, whether it's vaccination and the trend going down.
I have a question, Michelle, this might be for you. What about kids who might be struggling now with classes? Is there going to be anything for them to be here present in the summer? Are we doing any?
We're running out of summer school quite a bit for recovery options. We're actually already starting to address those recovery concerns in evening programming that we're doing right now. Yeah, we anticipate that there's going to be a lot of funding, and Bruce and I just want to be there with the teachers available, the audio platforms available.
Even internet.
What it's going to look like.
We're going to have a menu in the summer, as you know, that cares that, one, two, and three, called ESER. There's money for us, both the state and the federal level wants us to set up programs for learning loss, especially throughout the pandemic. So we're going to have our traditional summer track, what we normally run, but there's going to be also enrichment to address that need within our student population. And we got money and resource to back that up as well, so we're looking for that. Bruce and I have been watching our bank account, our school bank account, when the federal government will start delivering that money so we can start planning and programming appropriately.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Could I ask a quick question too? I know, typically in the past, like, a counselor would talk to kids about college, not their typical counselor, but like, somebody else would talk to them about college choices. I don't know which counselor that would be. Obviously, that is not happening. I think maybe it was its junior year or something like that. That obviously probably didn't happen this year, so with students. So are they trying to catch up with kids about talking about college choices and that kind of thing for some of these juniors or seniors?
Yeah, so those conversations haven't been halted in any way on our end. So we still have our college and career counselor, and she still is available and hosting meetings with students and families at times. And we actually, the way we designed our schedule this year, we had a really dedicated bison time, where sometimes that bison time happens during the day, and they either want to go to resource or somewhere else. They had dedicated time in developmental counseling happening in a more strategic way than ever before. So they had a lot of FaceTime with students during bison time counselors, and they continue to have all those individual meetings about college and career preparation. So I'm not sure that, you know, that's been lacking in any way, unless access to students has been lacking, right? Like their ability to, they reach out, they say, come on, let's make an appointment, and then if students aren't, you know, responding to that in some way, you can't just walk down the hall and get them. So there'll be some action planning on their end to ensure that when students do come back, they have those meetings. But, yeah, we still have our college and career counselor, and we still have all of our counseling developmental curriculum in place, and all of the same advisement that we would typically have.
Juliette, you have a junior?
I do.
Do you feel like he's getting?
I'm not sure. I mean, maybe he's not reaching out, you know? I don't know if that comes at junior year or senior year, but, you know, it could be also him.
Yeah, it's Rachel George-Akis, is the college and career.
I just remembered that with the other two. I don't recall that happening this year with him. Or maybe it happened at senior year, I don't remember, but I thought it happened junior year. But it could be him.
Yeah, they've tried to really stay on par with what they've done typically. So we haven't seen any major adjustments in their programming to that end. What we see, the changes in is what our colleges and universities are looking at, looking for, and us kind of keeping up with that and ensuring there's an understanding of what the qualifications for acceptance are going to be now that we've been living in this pandemic, and what's different about, you know, not having SAT scores, and sometimes things like that, so. And the universities have been doing a pretty good job of staying flexible and opening up requirements much further than how they have in the past. So hopefully, we see more students accepted than usual.
Yeah, I think, you know, the important takeaway on this is that, you know, we all know that this is a fluid situation. It's a situation, just as when the pandemic started, that this is a first time for everyone. And now, as we're coming out of the pandemic, going more to in-person, I think the important takeaway is that we all know, we all recognize that we have all the processes in place to adapt to, you know, as we pointed out, as far as how many students are going hybrid, how many aren't, and that we can adapt and adjust to those numbers as they change, you know, in the next, it would be the next couple of months. And I think we have all the processes in place, we know how to react, and how to move forward. So thank you for that.
Another question, so like, you said that kids probably want to get back and socialize because the weather's getting nice, and, you know, and the sports are picking up, and we have football, and so if they're participating in these sports, are they required to be here for in-person now?
No, we're not making that requirement. We're not making that requirement. That's, it's going to be, that's going to be very hard to enforce. And it's, we got to respect their decision on that one, at the parent level.
Okay, only one last item is, is that, going back to the vaccinations, I just wanted to take an opportunity to say, on behalf of this board, I would like to take this opportunity to recognize all our staff who assisted in the continuing vaccination effort for our community this past weekend. We continue to receive messages of appreciations for Fenton's prominent role in the vaccination effort, and this includes collaboration with other school districts. I just wanted to read a quick letter from one of these school districts. Dear James and District 100 Board of Education members, on behalf of the DuPage High School District 88 Administration and Board of Education, we would like to thank you for the graciously offering COVID-19 vaccines at your clinic to the District 88 community. With some of the highest case counts in the county, we have been anxious to access vaccines to produce the needed protections to our staff to safely return to school. We know the vaccines provided by Fenton helped to ensure this. With our partnership, with your partnership, over 200 vaccines were provided to the District 88 staff and associated elementary districts, Addison School District Four, District 45, and Salt Creek District 48. Thank you for your continued leadership, support, and partnership in working with District 88 community. We look forward to opportunities to support one another in the future. Thank you, Jean Barbenetti, Interim Superintendent, DuPage High School District 88. Now we move on to the consent agenda. We move on to the consent agenda. Does anyone have any questions regarding any items on the consent agenda?
I'd just like to add for the extended employment, you see that every year. We need certified staff here during the summer to prepare for the upcoming fall school. That includes counselors, special ed teachers, social workers, and some of our coordinators there to do that work so that our school year starts in the right
to do that work so that our school year starts in the right track. So that's what extended employment. I always get that questions from year to year. And that's just a practice that we have and other school districts has it, too. So it's a preparation. These are the teachers we need in in school to prepare for next year.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I make that motion.
Thank you, Patty. May I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Kate. Roll call, please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Tingpo Pong?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes.
The motion has passed. The next item is the adoption of rollover Fenton Education Association contract for 2022, 2023 year school year. James?
Sure. Last November, FEA communicated with me stating basically that they would like to roll over the contract for 2022, 2023. I brought it to the board and would like to make that recommendation to the board this evening and have it approved.
With that, may may have, does anyone have any questions regarding that? Then may I have a motion that the Board of Education adopt a one-year rollover of the Fenton Education Association contract for the 2022, 2023 school year?
So moved.
Thank you, Juliette. Thank you, Mary Ann, for that second. Roll call, please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Tingpo Pong?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. Motion has passed. Next item is the 2021, 2022 bus drivers' salary increases. James?
Board, we've been in discussion this for a couple of months now throughout throughout our meeting. We would like to make that recommendation that the board approve the 2021, 2022 bus driver's salary increase to 1.5%.
Any questions? May I have a motion that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to make adjustments to bus drivers' salaries for an overall amount of 1.5%. Adjustments will become effective in the 2021, 2022 fiscal school year.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Mary Ann. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leo. Roll call, please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Tingpo Pong?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. Motion has passed. Next item is the 2021, 2022 Edwill salary increases. James?
Similar to item A and B, we have continued conversation with the board in regards to the at-will salary increase of 2.3%. We would like to make that recommendation and hope the board provides that approves it for the 2021, 2022 at-will salary to increase at 2.3%.
Any questions? May I have a motion that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to make adjustments to Edwill salaries for an overall amount of 2.3%. Adjustments will become effective in the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. So moved. Thank you, Leo. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Roll call, please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Tingpo Pong?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. Motion has passed. Next item is the 2021, 2022 administration salary increases. James?
Sure. Similar to items A, B, C, continued conversation with the board in regards to an increase for the administrative staff here at Fenton of an increase of 1.9%. We would like to make that recommendation and hope that the board approves it for the 2021, 2022 administration salary increase of 1.9%.
Any questions? May I have a motion that the Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to make adjustments to administrative salaries for an overall amount of 1.9%. Adjustments will become effective in the 2021, 2022 fiscal year. This will not include administrators who are on who are in who are in their retirement track.
So moved.
Thank you. Patty, may I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leo. Roll call, please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Tingpo Pong?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. Motion has passed. Next item is the Associate Superintendent Principal Employment Agreement. James?
We recommend to the board that Dr. Sam Benson is our new Fenton Principal Associate Superintendent. Sam's experience, skill set, and attitude stood out during this interviews. The search included four rigorous rounds of interviews, which included FEA, FLOSS, bus drivers, at-will, parents, community members, administrators, and board members. Sam's performance during the current the current crisis COVID-19 pandemic was strong. His strong relationship with the staff and board and will allow him to hit the ground running and commence his transition immediately, like tomorrow. This is a win for Fenton. Sam's professional highlights include, Sam has been a key player regarding our success these last three years at Fenton, which includes the following: COVID crisis planning, safety and wellness, learning and students' achievement, including the graduation rate of 94%, 98% freshmen on track, and a balanced budget for the last five years, to name a few. Sam has built a positive rapport with the FEA, SEIU, FLOSS, and community members and leaders of the community, like the mayors, like the park district directors. He has 20 years of school administrator experience, both at the building and district levels. Currently, as an Assistant Superintendent at Fenton for Human Resource and Operation at Fenton Community High School District 100, his responsibilities include coordination of human resources, operations, safety and security, master scheduling and sectioning, and professional development for our staff. He was the Director of Student Services for DuPage High School District 88. Oversaw special education programming, disciplinary practices, guidance programming, and safety and security for the district. He was the Assistant Principal for seven years for People Personnel Service at Willowbrook High School. Oversaw special education guidance in Dean's Office, as well as PBIS, which is a social contracting program, and RTI, Response to Intervention. Basically, what do we do when students are not succeeding? He was the Director of the Deans at Willowbrook High School for two years. Dean of Students at Lockwood Township High School School Central Campus for four years. Lastly, my favorite, he was a social studies teacher for nine years and a head coach in three different sports. With that, we are excited to recommend Sam as the next Principal Associate Superintendent of Fenton.
Any questions? May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the Associate Superintendent Principal Employment Agreement as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Patty. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Jackie. Roll call, please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Tingpo Pong?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. Motion has passed. Next item is the certified.
President, William, I'd like to know that he wrote that all himself, too, so that way we got all.
Okay. Dr. Benson, would you like to say a few words?
Sure. First off, I'd like to thank the board this evening for appointing me to this position. It's an honor and privilege to be next year's principal here at Fenton. I'm looking forward to hit the ground running, as James described, in the next few months as I listen and learn to everything that's going on here and and learn as much as I can to prepare for a seamless transition to next school year. I'd also like to thank those that participated in the interview process, whether it be staff, parents, board members, as they did this on their own time. And I really appreciate them taking the time to hear my vision moving forward. So thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Benson. The next item is the Certified Staffing Plan for School Year 2021, 2022. James?
Fantastic. Slide up. Next slide. Thank you. We do this every year, okay? The theme for tonight is stability. Stability, okay? It's about 111 FTEs, okay? Just wanted to point out four things. Number one, staffing plan, three, four important points. The staffing plan remains stable for the last couple of years, no huge changes, which is fantastic, okay? Which is fantastic. And quite frankly, we like it that way. The staffing plan is the number of staff or FTEs, full-time equivalent. So when you see a number there that equals to one staff, so 1.0 equals one staff, which need which we need here at Fenton to keep the learning going at at school next school year, okay? The staffing plan is dependent on student enrollment, course requests, course, course requests, and student need. Next year, we're we're expecting a little bit of increase of of our student enrollment for that. And then we see a projection of a decrease in student enrollment. So we'll we'll continue to dive into that, see what the real numbers are. Again, our staffing, our staffing plan remains stable at 111, approximately 111 FTEs, which is approximately 111 staff members, certified staff. Just to point out a couple of things here, if you see here, for example, if we look at ESL bilingual, we know there's been an increase in our population with ESL bilingual. So you'll see it increase a little bit throughout the years there. Another one is special education. We've seen that increase as well throughout the year. So we 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 make those changes in regards to the FTEs. But in general, if you looked at number there, 110.8, it's pretty much stable throughout this last two, four, five, five years there. That is basically our staffing plan there. Any questions on that?
Could you expound on the math?
And math, sure.
Yeah, because you did answer my question, but I.
Sure. There was a programmatic change. We basically moved away from our traditional math program to integrated math, starting next year, one, two, and three. So for example, we used to have Algebra I regular, then there was Algebra A, and there was Algebra B. Now everyone is going to take Mathematics I. So with it with because of the.
Everyone is going to take it, even if they.
Not every, well, it depends which math level you're in.
Okay.
So it was a structural change which forced the FTE to go down there as well as student request. Yolanda, you want to expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, sure. When you move to integrated, we got away from those sections that were at 17 or 18 kids. So we were able to to place students into kind of their level specifically. And then within the math integrated program, we're doing not just in algebra, but there's a geometry portion to it. There's an added portion as we move students to try and scaffold them to get them into higher level courses. Mathematics is one of the hardest ones to get more students into AP. And within the integrated, we really feel like students will have that opportunity to excel at different levels. So again, why the staffing is where it's at is because we don't have those kind of splinted sections of students now that are in like, we used to have Algebra 1A, Algebra Part 1, Part B. They're now all in that Math 1 section. And then the teachers are able to, through playlists, through different differentiated opportunities, which we've been doing with our instructional coaches, able to meet those students where they are.
Okay.
And that's also tied into evidence-based learning? With me, answer?
Always for for whatever we do for their, yeah. The other part to that, too, and we don't claim to be an SAT school. I mean, that's not something that we do, but the SAT really focuses on algebra as part of going forward. So within that, within the Math 1, 2, and 3, there's much more focus within algebra as the students move through the through that curriculum. So, yep.
Okay, thank you. Then any any other questions? And may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the 2021, 2022 Certified Staffing Plan as presented?
Yes, I motion.
Thank you, Mary Ann. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leo. Mary, roll call, please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Tingpo Pong?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. That motion has passed. We move on to the auto shop exhaust bid.
Bruce, that's yours?
That's me, yes. This project was identified last year and further discussed at the January 20th, this past January, Facility Finance Committee meeting. And it includes the replacement of the outdated exhaust system in the auto shop area now that is currently in place. And it will really result in a cleaner, safer environment throughout that area. It will be funded through a state matching grant, state maintenance grant that is will be covered. 50% of that will be covered by this grant. Our architects, obviously, have worked with us on this. STR, they are recommending acceptance of the low bid from C Acetelli Heating and Piping Contractors for this work. We did receive seven bids. They were the low bid, and we're requesting the board to act on this recommendation tonight.
That was the lowest bid or just one of the lower bids?
That was the lowest bid, yes.
Thank you.
Bruce, was any of that covered by CARES Act money? Or is that the state?
Not this. There will likely be future projects with CARES Act money, but this project is a combination of local funds and half of it from the maintenance, state maintenance grant.
Okay, great.
Do we do anything with this heating and piping contractor? I mean, do we have any, like, anybody local in Bensonville that I?
I don't, we haven't used them here to my knowledge, but they're they've done work in schools. They've been vetted by the architect in terms of their work. They provided a bond for their performance. And they, you know, vetted, they've guaranteed that they understand the bid and the work involved in completing the work.
All right. Thank you, Bruce. Any other questions? May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the low bid from C Acetelli Heating and Piping Contractors, Inc. That includes the base bid and alternate number two for a total cost of $90,176 for the auto shop exhaust replacement project?
So moved.
I'll second.
Thank you, Juliette. Thank you, Jackie. Roll call, please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Tingpo Pong?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. Motion has passed. We move on to the notice of non-renewal and dismissal.
Sam, I believe that's yours?
Yes, this evening, we have five licensed staff members that we're not going to be renewing for next school year. And of note, they're all probationary licensed school employees.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution and non-renewal and dismissal notices as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Patty. Thank you, Mary Ann. Roll call, please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Tingpo Pong?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. Motion has passed. We move on to student Chromebook, Chromebook purchase. Jim?
Good evening. We're bringing forward the motion to approve our annual student Chromebook purchase. As you may remember, a number of years ago, we changed our process where we purchased Chromebooks for incoming freshmen only. And they retain those Chromebooks throughout their time here at Fenton. We also included things like accidental damage protection and extended warranties so that we didn't have to worry about the the maintenance and service, and the students didn't have to worry about being charged for repairs on those Chromebooks. Since that time, we've been purchasing the Dell two-in-one Chromebooks through a consortium purchase, the Illinois Technology Learning Consortium. They actually go out and bid products and provide pricing that's competitively priced throughout a number of different vendors. Our typical vendor for getting these through is CDW, CDWG. They've been great partners. They actually do some prep work for us on these before we receive them. And the only change is last year, we did this, and this year we're doing it again, is we're moving this process up. Typically, this would happen in the May and June timeframe, but because of the pandemic, there's been a. there's, there's been a significant shortage in Chromebooks. Uh, for example, last year, we, I believe we did this in April, and we got them in just in time to be able to distribute to the freshmen. Uh, we were aware of that, so, uh, I wanted to act quickly last year. Uh, we're aware of a, a potential shortage again this year, and, uh, we had budgeted, this is all part of a budgeted, uh, dollar amount. So we're purchasing them now so that we ensure that they're here and, and ready to go for the freshmen over the summer when they show up. Um, the good news is they, the pricing has remained pretty stable the entire time, and, uh, we're actually purchasing a few less this year. Uh, we had a couple, uh, uh, more than the students', um, uh, count that actually showed up last year, so we have some extras. And so we're, we're recommending three hundred and seventy, so our purchase this year is actually being reduced by a few thousand dollars. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just would like to reiterate how wonderful a program this is to every kid that steps in Fenton gets a Chromebook. We've, we're kind of normalized and that, that's just a normal thing. It wasn't eight, seven years ago. This is a huge thing. This is a game changer for our students, especially when you have sixty-two percent low income and a free and reduced lunch. Just wanted to make sure that's in front of us to always remaining and to maintain it for that many time where we use title money, um, um, for this initiative. We know that, uh, access to the internet, uh, is part of the learning process, access to the knowledge, what's there, uh, on, on the internet and different sites are critical for our twenty-second century, uh, students to, to thrive. So just wanted to reiterate how wonderful and, and this program is and to continue to push for it.
Uh, I'll add just briefly to that. Uh, I believe it was Kit that earlier said, uh, you know, encouraged us to reflect on what we've learned from the pandemic and our response to that. I can tell you, as we started on this process, uh, we quickly realized that the fact that all our students had Chromebooks, that we had before the pandemic, started passing out, uh, Wi-Fi hotspots, uh, having our, our teachers and our, uh, purchasing the instructional, uh, technology that, that our teachers needed and having our teachers work within the, the Google Classroom. We set us up really pretty well to make that, that quick pivot where I know a number of my colleagues struggled to get devices into students' hands, and they were scrambling during the spring of last year trying to make that happen. So the one lesson we did learn is some of the things we did worked out pretty well for us. It wasn't perfect, but it, it really put us a step ahead. So I think this is a great program that's, uh, very valuable for our students.
Mm-hmm.
So on the hotspot thing, does everybody, everybody's covered?
Anyone that needs a hotspot has a hotspot. We actually have gotten several waves, uh, several groups of those, and we have plenty of extras so that if other students need that, uh, we have that capability, so.
Okay.
And we were fortunate enough to be able to use some, some grant money and some funding to do that, so at no cost to us.
The, the mantra is, Patty, is that you got a device and you got Wi-Fi, is the mantra.
You know, I'll, I'll say something too. I think that's absolutely right. This is such a valuable, uh, resource for our students. Um, you know, just kind of a plug would, would be, ideally would be like a municipal Wi-Fi, uh, where our, our twin cities, Wooddale and Bensonville, were able to provide, um, you know, public access to that, just anywhere you go. I think ideally that would be amazing. Um, just a plug.
I share that with you. I brought that up to the, to both mayors, uh, Kit, so we're working on it. If, if a, a, a city in Germany do, um, Leverkusen or, and Dusseldorf can, can provide Wi-Fi for its entire, uh, eight million population, we could do that as well. So, uh, there's, there's a lot of challenges, but definitely.
Okay. Any, anything else? Any other questions? No, this excellent program, excellent, Jim. Thank, thanks so much.
Thank you.
Okay. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the fiscal year 2021 purchase of three hundred and seventy Dell Model thirty-one hundred two-in-one Chromebook computers from CWG for the amount of a hundred forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars?
So moved.
Thank you, Patty. May I have a second?
I second.
Uh, thank you, Kit. I think Kit.
He gives a little.
Roll call, please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Ting Paul Pong?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. Motion has passed. Next item is the Food Service Contract Renewal, uh, 2021, 2022. Uh, Bruce?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Wedeman. Uh, Arbor Management manages our district food service program, and the contract does allow, uh, for Arbor to, um, yearly extensions, uh, that are allowed by, to increase by the Consumer Price Index. And this would be the second extension, uh, and would run from July first, 2021 through June thirtieth of 2022. Uh, and we can, uh, do these yearly extensions up to four years. So we're, we've been our second year, uh, if the board agrees to do this. Um, we are recommending that to renew it with Arbor, uh, for the next school year, as mentioned. Uh, it would increase by the Consumer Price Index, which is stated in the contract, and it's one point four percent is what their contract would increase by. Um, in addition to that, there's also, uh, a fixed fee allowance that's included in the contract when, which, um, in essence is allowing Arbor to recoup the wage differential paid to employees for the, uh, due to the Minimum Wage Act mandated by the State of Illinois. So the, our staff, um, well, they're not our staff, their Arbor staff are part of an SEIU contract. That contract is, uh, actually the wages are less than what the state mandated minimum wage is. Um, so the state allows the contract bidder, uh, provider to bill back that, uh, amount, that difference, that wage differential to the district. So we get a monthly bill from them on our invoice, um, that, uh, breaks down the cost and the, and the labor involved and the costs associated with it. So I just want to make the board aware of that. That's a, a cost that's passed on to us as well. Um, but it's within their, uh, contract provisions. Um, and that's an estimated amount there that's in this, um, in the, uh, write-up of eighty-seven hundred dollars, and that will be, uh, vary based on, uh, the labor needs and the number of days, but that's a, that's a pretty close, uh, number. Um, and ultimately, the goal of the program is to break even, um, in, in the food service program when all expenses are factored in. So, um, we're asking the board to take action on this extension tonight.
Bruce, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
Have we been providing lunches, breakfast for students? If they, do they come in? Do we, are we delivering them?
Yeah, no, great question. Um, and so we've deviated a little bit from the contract. We're still under a federally funded program, but the state, uh, we, we have a, uh, you know, a, uh, updated contract that allowed us to make this, you know, kind of deviation, which basically is kind of a universal free program to all students. And this is not just unique to Fenton, but every country, uh, district that participates in the federally funded program. Um, so our, our students are, uh, given breakfast and lunch daily, and it's a grab-and-go type of arrangement, so. And this has been happening since last March through the summer, and then, uh, through the end of this year, the program is in place through June thirtieth. We don't know if it'll be extended or not. Uh, Arbor's managed that for us on our behalf. Uh, we've been in those contract revisions to you to approve in, in the past. Um, but yes, they, uh, students, and actually, students receive meals seven days a week. So they get a meal bundle. Um, when they come in, they, they get a multi-pack for three days, one day, and then the next day when they come in, or two days later, they get a, a four-pack.
But they do have to come to the school to get it?
They, yeah, they do. We don't deliver them. They do come, uh, they can drive up in the afternoon for students who are remote, and then students obviously who are here take their meals when they, when they leave for the day.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
And Jackie, just to add to that too, I know Bruce knows this number. We have given approximately two hundred thousand free meals to our students, and if they want more, they could have more. Coupled with our Food for Families that I know Patty and, and Paul and the rest of the board have supported throughout this year. One of our priorities during the pandemic, as you know, is safety, wellness, and feeding. That's my favorite part, as you know. So, uh, we, we got to share that to other people. So we're very proud of that. Can't have kids go hungry.
That's right.
Has, um, the, the bundling of the meals, is that been more labor-intensive than like if they were just serving meals? Do you know, how, how is that?
Um, actually, the labor has been reduced by them because it, it, you know, there's just not as much required to, you know, produce, you know, uh, prepared meals every single day, so. Um, but it, so that, those costs have, have dropped somewhat.
Do they do that on-site, or do they bundle them?
All, everything's done here on-site, yes. Yeah.
And it's pretty much all prepackaged, right? Except for maybe a sandwich or?
Yeah, yeah. Now it is with the meal packs. Um, oftentimes they're frozen and they, they have to, you know, be heated up at home and whatnot, but, but they do include a, you know, a, a breakfast and a lunch, um, each day of the week.
Okay. Cool.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Bruce. Then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the contract renewal extension commencing July first, 2021 through June thirtieth, 2022 with Arbor Management, Inc. for the provision of food service management and an increase in wages due to the minimum wage increases that are mandated by the State of Illinois.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Jackie. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Uh, Mary, roll call, please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Paul Pong?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. Motion has passed. Now we move on to the SDEI Committee. Uh, James?
Yes. At our last, um, me, uh, board meeting, uh, in, um, in February, uh, board member Ting Paul Pong, uh, recommended to, that we have a discussion and a vote in regards to the SDEI Committee, um, and he will make that presentation now. I believe there are handouts, Kit, that everyone should have. So I turn it over to you, Kit.
Okay. Uh, thank you, James, and thank you, President Wedeman. Um, I, you know, just think, thinking about what we've gone through the past, uh, months with, um, comments that have been made, but also the work, the positive work that we've done already through the district. Um, you know, I felt like maybe this would be a good alignment for the board to have an SDI Committee, and, uh, did some research on it. Um, now, when, when you look at sustainability, um, first of all, just that S, it's the ability to maintain a certain level or rate. Um, you know, it also includes how, how we treat other people, how we treat ourselves, how we treat our resources, how we respect our surroundings and environment. Um, you know, obviously, you look at diversity, it's just basically the quality, the, the practice and quality of including or involving people around, uh, with the range of social and ethic backgrounds, equity, um, the quality of being fair and impartial, and then inclusion, the practice of, uh, or policy of providing equal access to opportunities and resources for people who might have otherwise be marginalized. So when you look at and reflect on our strategic plan or values here at, at Fenton, it, it's clear that we, we each believe in that. Um, the, the reason why maybe the purpose for, uh, an SDI Committee is to allow the board to, um, you know, celebrate, address field issues, uh, that are related to our district's SDI. Um, it would be in alignment with our administration, uh, with Delt. It would be in alignment with our faculty, and, um, I'm being presumptuous here, but I'm sure our students also have a pretty good awareness of, uh, those issues as well. So I think in all, um, I'm hoping that, um, you know, our, my board members here agree. Um, in, as far as meeting frequency, um, it doesn't have to be frequent. Um, I'm proposing every four months, so three times a year, and the number of members that are required would be just two. Um, or, you know, we could call a special session if, if needed.
Kit, could you just elaborate on, on the purp, the, the concise purpose of the committee?
Uh, okay, so the, the purpose would be to allow the board to address and field issues related to SD, district SDI or, uh, celebrate, uh, for example, our, our equity report with Dr. Dubil, fact that we're one of the first districts to do that. Um, if, you know, uh, for example, if, uh, when you look at the finance committee, um, you know, Bruce would report to the, the finance, uh, committee, and then we would report back to the board. Uh, there could be an opportunity where Delt would, um, report first back to the SDI where there's a discussion, and we would report back to the board as well. So, uh, I think it's just a point of contact, first to, to address anything that might be relative to, um, SDI, and then be able to report back to the board. Questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
Um, yeah, I do. I, so sustainability, you said the ability to maintain a certain rate or level of what? The ability to maintain at a certain rate or level of, what are you thinking?
Yeah, um, when, when you look at, um, sustainability, for example, it, it's essentially the ability to, uh, keep a certain level, um, keep your excellence. Um, again, you, uh, social sustainability, there's economic sustainability. So when we look at, um, our, our finance, our fiscal, uh, financial planning, um, we're, we're looking at, okay, um, on the finance side, you know, how, how do we continue to be fiscally responsible, sustain our, our facilities, right? So, um, in terms of sustainability, it's tied into, uh, social justice SDI. It's interconnected. Um, for example, um, you look at a, um, uh, you know, a, a, a catastrophe that happens, typically, these catastrophes affect, um, you know, more marginalized groups or people of color, or also, uh, of low economic class. So, um, it, if you look at, um, as, look at DEI, it's, it's interconnected, it's, it's, there's an intersection there. Um, will we tackle a lot of sustainability issues? Uh, maybe not, but, um, we can't ignore that it's interconnected.
Okay, just to clarify, Kit, the, 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 just, just so we understand, the purpose of the committee is to, um, vet and filter and address issues regarding diversity, equity, and inclusion related to students, correct?
Yeah, absolutely.
So they, so, so that's the, the purpose of, of the committee?
Yes.
But now with the sustainability aspect of it?
Mm-hmm.
That broadens the, the, the whole, you know, I mean, there, there's a lot in sustainability.
There could be. Um, you know, so, again, um, there may not be issues related to sustainability in the topics, but to ignore that inner connection, um, in my mind, um, you know, would, would limit, would limit our conversation. Um, you know, if, if you look at, again, um, climate change, or, or if you don't, uh, think there's climate change, then you look at catastrophes in, 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 in weather, um, whether it's a flood, whether it's, you know, uh, bad weather, snows, things like that. Um, typically, it affects, um, marginalized groups. So, uh, for example, you know, maybe, um, uh, there's, there's an issue where, um, you know, snow, snow is hitting a certain, a community here in Bensonville, right? And, uh, we want to address some type of equity issue with that. Um, it not necessarily, um, would be related to, um, you know, to SDI Committee, but it could be, and maybe that's something that the board would want, would want the SDI Committee to, to look at. Um, but, but it, it is more weighted towards DEI. But, but again, um, the, the sustainability part of it, I think, is interconnected.
Um, so it would only be sustainability as it relates to DEI?
Yes.
As, as we know, there's sustainability.
I, I certainly don't want to broaden that scope, um, but, you know, to have that piece would be, I think, uh, fitting. I, I don't want to broaden the scope to be everything.
Right.
That's, that's not the purpose.
And that's what I'm asking. I mean, I think that would be the board's concern.
Sure.
Is to...
Yeah, because other things are...
Yeah, it's a pretty general subject. I mean, it covers a lot of turf, the whole sustainability thing.
It can, it can. I think the point I want to make is that, you know, we want to keep it simple and concise. We want to make sure that we don't exclude anything that's tied to DEI, and we want to stay in our lane. So, for example, with finance, with NedSec, with the Bensonville Community Foundation, you know, we always have these gray areas where we interconnect, but typically, it's not going to do that. But, you know, again, if the board looks at it and go, okay, well, maybe this is something that SDI Committee should look at, then that's going to be on, you know, the choice of the board to do. So, for example, you know, when we conduct a policy committee, you know, we have an agenda, and it's usually defined by a source, right? So, you know, if there is an agenda that the board deems as an SDI topic, then we would put that on the agenda and then discuss that on the committee.
So the board's going to govern what goes on your agenda?
Yeah, absolutely. It's just like if, again, it's the dynamic of a committee of a board. So, for example, you know, the comments that came through, right, within the past few months, you know, we could have, you know, if we had a committee, just decided, let's really have the committee look at it, and then have the committee research and see what there is we need to get done, if anything, and then report back to the board. I think that's a pretty good example of how to, you know, get the benefits of the SDI Committee.
I don't think you want, I don't, I don't think you want the sustainability to get in the way of the diversity, equity, inclusion part of this.
I do not.
Yes, and I think it's, you know, that's sort of getting you in the weeds here.
I see.
So I don't think that's the main part of this, really.
Okay. So I'll leave it up to the board to decide if we vote on this, or when we vote on it, if, you know, DEI would be the better committee, you know, as a theme, then let's vote on that. I think that's why we're deliberating, right? It's to figure out as a board what we want to do.
It seems like it is, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, go on.
Did you want to follow up on that?
No, no, go ahead.
Dr. Dubiel said something about, you know, how Delt is staff because of, you know...
The work that needs to be done.
Yes, yeah, the work that... So, but she mentioned also about, like, advisories at the community and the student level.
Student voice, yes.
Right, so could that be something that a DEI Committee could tie into?
Or report to. Let's say the Delt, let's say, hey, look, we're thinking of a student voice, and we could go to a DEI, you know, a report saying, hey, look, this is how we're doing, promoting student voice, and reporting it to, for example, a DEI Committee, which is going to report it to the board.
Okay, it would, so it would be a separate entity? It wouldn't be like student voice could be a part of a DEI Committee?
I think we got to people remember, this is a board committee. It's a board committee.
Right, right.
So then there wouldn't be a superintendent or principal that would also sit in on it?
Yeah, we would provide you the information, yes. Or other administrators, or feedback from Delt, feedback from student council, feedback from what Yovan is dealing with, family, community, Padres Unidos, Polish Outreach, PTA, clubs, activities.
So that's the kind of stuff that would come to DEI? Is that what you're thinking, Kit?
Yes.
So that's, I mean, that's what I was just going to say. I can see the DEI portion because it's concise, and I think it's clear, at least it's clear in my mind, on how that would relate and interact with administrations or other groups coming to the committee with that specific person. With me, it just gets a little fuzzy with the sustainability part.
I understand.
It's not as clear then.
So are you recommending, recommending, sorry, I can't talk, that the board vote on the policy and remove the sustainability and just do DEI? Is that what I'm understanding here?
We could move ahead with a vote for, I think, just DEI, or with SDEI, so the sustainability, we can move forward with either votes, or we can table this item to the next meeting.
I just want to go back real quick at what I heard from Kit, too, is that he's saying, like, let's say there's a Delt report, and Dr. Dubiel has that bi-annual report. It doesn't report to DEI Committee, it reports to the entire board, right? Let's say we want to have a turf field, for example, and it's going to cost so many millions of dollars. It's not going to, and we want to use sustainability sort of stuff. Doesn't necessarily have to report to the DEI. It reports to the board, kind of like what we're doing now. I hope that's clear.
Right.
We want a turf field? No.
Sure, why not?
I would, if everyone's in agreement, I would suggest that we could move forward with a vote on DEI at this point.
You feel comfortable with that?
Yeah, I think, I would be comfortable with what the board agrees with. This is something that I wanted to bring up and propose, and, you know, if we're in the direction of a DEI Committee, I think that's a really good start for all of us. So, thank you.
Okay, I think that right now would be the better way to go. Otherwise, the other best course would be just to move this forward and table it. But I think we should go ahead and amend that motion.
So you would have to change the motion?
Right, so we will, yeah, so we will change it. The subject is DEI Committee. May I have a mo... I'm sorry?
As presented.
Right. May I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the DEI Committee as presented?
As amended.
As amended, I'm sorry, you're right, as amended.
So moved?
Thank you, Juliette, may I have a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Roll call, please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. The amended motion has passed. Now we move on to committee reports. The first one is the Bensonville Community Foundation. Juliette and Kit, I don't know if there's anything new?
We have a meeting on Thursday, uh, is it next Thursday?
Next Thursday.
Next Thursday. Do you have anything from the last meeting that you could think of? I think we talked about it at the last meeting, so...
Yeah, we did. We've updated. No new business since the last meeting we had here.
Since the last one.
I'd just like to report to Juliette and Kit that we have submitted the application for the AP.
That's right, yeah. There was a submission from our district, from Mr. Ontenko, on our AP fees to be a grant.
For free, reduced lunch.
Right, and I think we'll be taking a vote on that, right?
The next meeting.
At the next meeting, so...
Okay, all right, thank you. The next is the Finance Facilities Committee meeting. The only item I know of is we will have a committee meeting in June.
I think we would like to push that up a little bit after talking to Sam and Bruce. As you know, the summer season's coming. We need to have some projects for the upcoming summer work season. We have not found a month yet, but we're looking more likely May and June.
In May rather than June?
Correct.
That makes complete sense.
Okay, we'll look at May instead of June for that committee meeting. Mary Ann, I don't know if you have anything further to add?
I do not, thank you.
With that, okay, thank you. Next one is IASB Delegate. All the board members should have received the link for the March 20 virtual DuPage Division of the IASB Spring Meeting, which is this Saturday morning. If you don't have, if you're intent, if you are intending to go to that meeting, you don't have the link, let me know. So that's this Saturday. And the only other thing is a reminder to all board members to file their Statement of Economic Interest. You should have all received that link also. It's pretty simple to do that filing. If you have a problem on that one, let me know. And those are really the only two items I have.
We have one more. Paul, President Wedeman doesn't know this, but the President of the Illinois Association of School Board provided me with a letter with a certification of appreciation to President Wedeman in regards to his time as a DuPage Illinois Associate Board Member. Outside of being a board member here at Fenton, he is also part of the Division of DuPage that plans that activities for other board members, like the one on Saturday. He's given his time, and we just, I just want to, you know, commend you for giving up your time away from family and making DuPage a better school system and its so many programs it offers. So, thank you, Paul. It's a great thing.
Thanks so much. Thanks again, thank you. Okay. Another surprise? That's good. The next item is Lend. Anything new on Lend?
I've attended a couple meetings with Lend. There's a lot, as you know, election a couple months ago. There's a lot of new legislation out there, which includes the omnibus legislation that we have to dive into, which in a couple years, we have to add some graduation requirements to our programs here at Fenton. So we're trying to piece that out together, but a lot of new legislation that the Illinois Assembly is trying to go through. We have another meeting this Friday.
Okay. And NedSec?
I'm sorry, but James, who was there, I was unable to attend.
Sure. NedSec stands for, you know, is the North DuPage Special Education Cooperative. We had a meeting last Friday, similar to our staffing meeting dismissal, next year's work and so forth. It was very successful, kind of like our board meeting this evening. Their next meeting would be next month.
All right, thank you. And the Policy Committee, I don't, we have none scheduled right now, unless Patty or Kit.
No, no new business.
There's nothing new there.
It's just Jen.
Okay, one last thing. I wanted to give an acknowledgement and recognition to Juliette Rego, Board Member Juliette Rego, who suggested the sign that was put up in the hall with the "Hate Has No Home Here." She had made a suggestion, the Delt team worked on it, and I think it's a great addition to the middle of our school. But thank you, Juliette, it all started with you. Thanks so much.
Way to go, girl.
All right, our next board meeting. Does anyone have any other new business or anything? If not, our next... Sure, go ahead.
So I don't have new business for you guys, so don't worry about it. So I just want to point out the work that James did for the vaccinations. I know we had it up there as a thank you, but the work that he did and the time that he spent, and the emails that I got at 2:30 in the morning explaining what's going to happen for the vaccinations, thank you for that. But I think, I know we said a thank you, but he's really been underappreciated for the work that he's done. And if you take a look at surrounding areas and even these bigger districts, they can't get the work that's been done by James. So I think it's important to recognize, I know we gave the thank you at the end for him and Ron, but, you know, I will, I'll speak for Dr. Benson here. When this all started, he and I were like, is he nuts? What is he doing? And he persisted, and he made phone calls, and he showed up at people's offices. And I think that restraining order has been dropped, right? So that's good. But he really pushed to vaccinate our staff, to make sure that they could come in for our students. He definitely pushed to make sure that our community is vaccinated. I mean, you know, we often talk about that the superintendent is kind of the politician of the school, and he was really a servant leader in what he's done. So I just want to say thank you personally for what you've done. So thank you, James.
Thank you.
A little out of order, but I just wanted to...
Well said, Yovan.
That's okay. Thank you, Yovan, for pointing that out again. It's very well deserved, yeah. Thanks again, James.
Thank you.
All right, so our next board meeting is Wednesday, April 21st, 2021, at 7:00 PM. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Mary Ann. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Leo. Roll call, please.
Peyton Howell?
Yes.
Rego?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Pao Pong?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. Motion has passed. Good night, everyone. Stay safe. Thank you for coming, and have a good night.
It was great to see everybody.
Thank you. Yeah, it was great to see everyone again, yes.